The special planning board meeting of November twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty-two is seven oh two P M. Um, let me do a quick roll call of planning board members. Uh, Linda.
Yeah.
Mark.
Here.
Uh, Sue.
Here.
This is Nathan. I am here. We know that Andrew Boardman and Haley Oradall are, Haley may be able to join later, but is not currently able to join. Okay, so the one and only reason for tonight's meeting is to go over the Z B A recommendation for Concord Academy for a special permit with site plan review under section six point two point eleven, seven point two, seven point seven point two point eight, eleven point six, and eleven point eight point seven to construct the Centennial Arts Center, relocate and rehabilitate two existing dwellings at two twenty Main Street and I'd Ides College Cottage Cottage, not college, uh, convert existing attached garage at two thirty eight Main Street into a dwelling unit and other associated site improvements at one sixty-six Main Street. Oh, all right. So I see a lot of familiar faces. Who's going to kick things off?
Um, I think I am. So um, so I went through and amended my report based on the um, board's comments from the meeting last week. Um, so specifically, mostly um, the dealing with the parking and um, the requested for reserve parking and then the relief from parking as it relates to the use of the parking spaces on Main Street. So um, I didn't know if there was specific questions or how you want to go, if you want to just go through the report again um, and the edits from the last time or how you want to proceed, Nathan?
I think uh, just to sort of expedite things rather than go literally through everything, can we just hit on the notes of of any major changes? I know I'm looking at, you know, I've seen some of the changes that were made, and I don't think we need to go over each individual little one. Um, but uh, I don't know if we can start with uh, because I'm assuming the revised one you sent, all the blue highlights are since the last time we've seen this. Is that right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Um, so.
But I think the sub for substantive one isn't until um, page top page three.
Yes. Um, so the um, well, starting on page two, um, just wanted to clarify. I did meet with the applicant and his team. Um, and at the last meeting, the improvements to the uh, West Campus driveway, which will be the driveway to the Centennial Arts Center. To improve the site distances at at that new driveway. The applicant's engineer will work with the engine Concord Public Works Engineering Division. Um, it is likely that additional site distance will be needed. Uh, and those two adjacent parking spaces would need, the vehicles need to be removed. Um, it still remains to be seen whether um, those two parking spaces would just be deleted or whether there's the opportunity to adjust um, the striping of parking along that in that area so that you wouldn't see a net loss. So that's a, that's a conversation that the applicant would have with engineering division when they go for the driveway approach and the right of way permit to make those modifications. So I just wanted to make that clear. It's not um, you know, it's, it's not definite at this time that there actually be a net loss of spaces on Main Street. Um, there could be a reconfiguration of some of the stripping. So I just wanted to make that clear.
I would actually like to jump in with a couple of comments on this, and I understand it's not part of the application. Um, but I'm going to make these comments anyway. One is, which is that I noticed there are eight curb cuts going into uh, Concord Academy. And two of them seem not absolutely required uh, for uh, the benefit of accessing the site. And those would be two possibilities to close off and add back in two or three or four parking spaces. Or alternatively, if it's not possible to restripe um, in alternatively, or in addition, if it's not possible to restripe, I wonder if we end up having to lose parking spaces, whether it would be possible to take them away for car parking, but convert them into mass on-street bicycle parking with racks for the benefit of the public. So again, not part of the application, but I wanted to throw that out there because I think those would be interesting improvements to Main Street.
Um, so to the um, the point about the curb cuts, um, each one of those driveway curb cuts accesses some part of the campus for some function. So if you close that off, it would be um, whether there's the ability from somewhere inter, you know, interior to the campus to get to that spot. And that becomes far more challenging, given um, what happens on the interior of the campus as far as walkways and um, open spaces and utilities. And so I, while it, it sounds like a, you know, a simple thing to close off, you know, a driveway, um, even if it's only, you know, four or five parking spaces, um, interior, to be able to access those spaces, um, it may be incredibly difficult. So um,
Yes, although the two um, curb cuts I was referring to are both cases where there is a circle drive. And um, it certainly makes it more convenient to drive in one curb cut and immediately out the other one if passing through. But it would be possible to make um, three-point turns in those two places. So I, I wasn't referring to any of the ones that simply access by a single drive to the interior of the campus because yes, that would indeed cause chaos.
Um, okay. So again, not part of this application, but some of the circular drives are also historic to the structure that's there. Uh, so I mean, there's, there's just a lot going on um, when you talk about that. As far as the um, bicycle, you were saying bicycle racks where the two parking spaces are?
Since it would be easier to see over bicycles than um, uh, vehicles of any size, but there could be other issues, and I don't know if it would be possible.
Um, yeah, so I um, I do not think the engineering division uh, would through their uh, requirements and design requirements allow bicycle parking within the public way in that manner for various reasons, safety reasons, uh, plowing, sanding. Um, it's uh, it's not a, you know, a protected location as far as being able to stand and um, lock up your bike and um, so I mean, it may be, you know, from a safety perspective to do, you know, a bump out in that location. But um, again, that's beyond the scope of of this and into the realm of um, public works engineering.
Can I, can I ask? So this is referring to the existing driveway that's labeled as West Gate now. This is not talking about the driveway that's, that's sort of one further west that goes to the property that um, uh, that they bought some time ago that has a home at the end that they're going to be using for um, faculty, right? It's, it's the existing sort of West Gate parking lot.
So um, Jim or
Can I turn Elizabeth on this?
Um, well, if, if Jim or Tom, I don't see um, Steve, but if somebody could bring up the plan, the plan, and you can identify exactly which driveway we're talking about.
Sure.
Sure thing.
But if you'd like to jump in and add anything down, please go ahead.
So I think the parking spaces that we're looking at that potentially may be lost are based upon that west, that new west gate entrance. The furthest, the further most westerly parking lot, um, it doesn't give the twenty-foot sight lines that engineering would desire. So we want to look at that and then look at maybe is there a possibility of relining the rest of that uh, parking on Main Street as it heads towards an aesthetic intersection. But we want to be conscious as a neighbor that has a driveway to her. I'm not sure it's all feasible in there.
Okay. Uh, I just want to take a second to recognize that Haley uh, was able to join.
So the driveway they're talking about Nathan um, is this last one, the last driveway for the campus?
The hall, they, the one that's currently goes to the home. Yep. Okay. That, that's what I was just trying to clarify because I know that the one out of the existing west gate there, they've already blocked or striped off uh, basically one, one side. So I was just trying to make sure they weren't stripping off a second one in a row. I was just trying to understand that space. I'm awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney. Um, and then starting um, top of page um, three, uh, at the meeting last week, um, the applicant went through the cross-section, the two cross-sections um, in response to a question regarding height. So I just added um, that piece of information into the report. Um, and then there was clarification on why the N R C um, was waiting to issue their order of conditions. Um, so I just, I added that. And um, added the actual cut and fill calculations in the appropriate section under the floodplain. Thought that was important. And then it gets into the repart, into the whole conversation about parking. So I don't know if, how you, if you want me to just continue to just quickly go through this and then come back to questions?
Can I ask the questions? Um, how many square feet is the new building, Don? The Centennial Arts Center? It's about thirty-seven thousand odd square feet, give or take. Elizabeth, I thought your explanations of the other parking stuff that went on for Umbrella and the library were really interesting. Okay? And they used a different matrix when they looked at that. Um, they looked at square footage and said for every, I don't know, a thousand square feet, um, excuse me, for every two hundred and fifty square feet, they required one parking spot. One of my concerns is that um, you're asking us to change the, the way we look at parking for the school, and I can appreciate where you're coming from. But there's also going to be an influx of people on occasion to the Centennial Arts Center or to the school itself, or to the library or to the umbrella. And I'm concerned that we're um, overpopulating the parking spaces. And everything that I read that you said to us said that we should only utilize eighty-five percent of the capacity at any one point in time. And I'm afraid that we are going to be over that. Um, that's, that's my only concern of the whole application, to tell you the truth. I think the, the height thing, my opinion is, is satisfied. I think the the N R C has the ability to look at the floodplain thing far better than I do, but the parking concerns me. So my question is, why did the building commissioner use this matrix of the student population versus the square footage to the building?
Um, so um, that's based on the requirements in the zoning bylaw. Um, under table four of the um, of the zoning bylaw where, which is the parking requirements based on use. And each use is identified in that table and what its parking is. So the library um, and you know, the umbrella fall under, you know, a philanthropic use. Um, or actually, I think the library falls under as a library. Um, Cafe Nero falls under as a restaurant. Um, and each one of them have a different parking requirement based on a different metrics. So for an elementary school, middle school, and a high school, they have their own set of parking requirements. So it, it, it's not the building commissioner, you know, using a different mi- matrix, uh, metric. It's the zoning bylaw and the requirements in the zoning bylaw.
Okay. But if you take that Centennial Arts Center and look at it as thirty-seven thousand square feet and looked at it from the matrix of a philanthropic or some other institution, they'd require a lot of parking spots for that.
Well, but that's because it's, it's a, a, a general place of assembly that's open to the public.
Right.
And that's not, that's not, that's not what a private school is. And so, you know, uses at a school um, that are associated with a school fall under, you know, that purview of what my school is.
I, I understand that. Okay. That oftentimes the hundred and twenty-five seat is going to be filled by students that live on campus, not by a hundred and twenty-five people that are coming in from the community. I get that. Okay. But you could tell that I have a concern about the parking thing. That's all. Okay. So that's it. Thank you for the explanation, Elizabeth.
Yes, Linda. You're on mute.
I have a question on how the um, largest shift was calculated um, based on the staffing numbers and what just how, how that, how that hundred and fifty-five came to be.
Yeah, I'm going to turn to Jim Newton to help with that explanation.
Yeah. So uh, if you look at the hundred and eighty-eight head count, I'm going to call it, which is all staff, both part-time and full-time. Um, there are about thirty-three between the hundred and fifty-five that we're proposing and the hundred and eighty-eight that are shown as the full-time head count. Um, of that, essentially, we looked at a third of that population being onsite at any given point in time, um, which calculated out to the delta between the hundred and eighty-eight and the hundred and fifty-five that we're requesting. Um, and that third number essentially looks at the size of the shift for many of the cycles that are going through. So we looked at the number of faculty that are teaching instrumental lessons, um, which is about, uh, I think ten of that thirty-three. Built the number of faculty that are um, dealing with food service and food prep, uh, which again is a fraction of the total number that we're looking at uh, of the hundred and eighty-eight head count. Um, and from those numbers, we were able to calculate what the largest shift of individuals that would be on campus at any one given time was, and that's how we calculated out the hundred and fifty-five number.
Jim, will we throw coaches into that next also?
Yep, that's true. So coaches are coming to campus in the afternoon once school releases. Um, and they're teaching athletics and intramurals that are focused on student activities once some of the teaching staff have left campus.
So, so essentially that was thirty-three. Um, but your, your faculty staff part-time is forty-three. So you figured ten of those people at any point in time are going to be overlapping with the full-time?
Correct.
So that's not a third, that's a quarter or less. But, okay. So that's just a calculation.
Correct. Yeah. So we went through the staff list.
Plug that in. Um, and it, it seems to me that um, I keep questioning why we're not including guests or, or um, um, service, service people who come in to the campus on a, a regular basis to provide services, not just co, you know, I, I don't, I assume there's a variety of um, people that you don't have in the um, staff numbers, but who are delivering things or repairing things or painting things or whatnot. And um, I keep being told that those are in the, in the calculations, but
And that most of, most of those folks, let's just talk about tradespeople. We're not going to be able to do work while we're fully occupied campus. So that usually happens on a vacation period when our population uh, vacates the property, so to speak. Does that make sense? Um, we have irregular visitors, but it's random. You know, we happen to have admissions, open houses. That's a peak time we have, but then the rest of the time, it goes back to some type of a normal level. Um, and the springtime, it's going to change a little because we've already made decisions on admissions, for example, and won't have the number of visitors that we have in the fall.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
All right. Can we? Should we move along or are there more questions around the parking?
I think there's, you know, still more questions around the parking. Um, and, and I guess the, the question is why we're working off the two hundred and, or working off the two hundred and four or working off the two hundred and thirty-seven spaces that we should have had and that we don't have now? And some of the in.
Jimmy, want to explain the two oh four? How, where we got that number from?
Yeah, I mean, I think Elizabeth, it's in your report. I don't know if we want to pull that exhibit up. We could look at it together. Um, but I think based on the report that Elizabeth uh, furnished uh, in deliberation with the uh, uh, building commissioner. There was a recommendation to shift the calculus from uh, the two hundred and thirty-seven, which you see at the bottom of the page here in blue, um, to the two hundred and four that's shown below. Um, and I think, you know, this last sentence at the bottom of the pair, the last paragraph here showing on Elizabeth's screen, building commissioner has determined that the required parking under the zoning bylaws, three hundred and fifty-four spaces, based on the total number of staff and the previous special permits granting relief, twelve, two hundred and thirty-seven parking spaces that are required pursuant to the bylaw. And then I think the next paragraph, Elizabeth talks about um, the position that suggests that we'd want to shift that number down to two hundred and four. And that, uh, let's see, that is a corner acknowledged in the application and formalized how parking for the school is calculated moving forward. Um, so I think to answer maybe your question, Linda, I think it's based on the deliberation that Elizabeth has had with the building commissioner around the interpretation of the staffing figures that have been presented um, and the previous relief that's been granted to Concord Academy in nineteen ninety and in nineteen ninety-eight for the previous projects. Is that a fair characterization, Elizabeth?
That's a fair characterization.
Okay.
All right, I think.
Do you want me to continue or?
I haven't heard. Sue, do you have any questions? Linda, do you have any more? Mark, Haley?
I don't. I
Not at this time.
What they're proposing.
Uh, yeah, with respect um, to what we've discussed so far, same for me.
Yeah, I think the methodology around the largest shift, um, that makes the most, that makes the most sense to me. So.
Um, and then as far as the rest of um, the report, again, it's just formalizing um, through the relief from parking. And, and I know a couple of board members have had um, you know, the similar question. Um, the difference between relief from parking and, you know, reserved parking and um, you know, relief from parking, the best example I can give is a Cafe Nero. Uh, they, they do not have the ability to provide any parking on their site. Um, you know, the building takes up the whole entire site. So that would be relief from parking. Um, reserved parking is they have the ability to build out um, two hundred and four spaces, um, but only want to build out a hundred and forty-seven. Uh, the building commissioner has asked that the use of calculating parking based on employees on the largest shift um, be categorized as relief from parking because it's just, it's a different way of calculating the required parking um, instead of what the zoning bylaw is stating where it's just one space per faculty or staff. Um, so that would be the difference, um, you know, somewhat between um, this project and um, let's say, you know, the um, umbrella wasn't able to build out, you know, their, all of their required parking on the site. So um, they requested relief from parking and as part of that requested relief um, has had the ability to show, we utilize the municipal parking lot, we use the parking lot on Stowe Street um, and others, and then the same thing with the library. They, um, we're not, they're not able to build any parking on their site either. So that would be the difference. Um, and then uh, so the yellow is, um, the sections where, you know, the board has to um, basically deliberate and make your determination as far as your recommendation to the Board of Appeals. And as far as the rest of um, the blue changes um, the applicant, applicant provided um, additional information regarding the sustainability measures, which I added some of the key components. Um, but there is uh, reference the memo that they provided uh, to supplement the application. And then as far as the conditions, um, this blue section dealt with a comment that Linda made at the last meeting. Uh, and then I did notice there were a couple of holdover conditions that don't apply um, from uh, the middle school, which would be deleted. And then just clarification on the permitting required for the ticket cafe lounge area. I think um, and then um, just clarif, trying to clarify, um, you know, condition thirty-six will all depend on, you know, you know, if this moves forward, when a building permit is issued, how long it takes to construct. So um, you know, it's not going to be constructed and have a certificate of occupancy by April of two thousand and twenty-three. Um, maybe not even two thousand and twenty-four. Um, so you tried to adjust this wording to provide that flexibility. And then that's um, that's, that's it unless uh, in the board wants to go through the highlighted sections.
Yeah, I think for the yellow, we could just run down that pretty quick because the first one is essentially what we just discussed. Oh, um, I see a hand raised. I just want to say that uh, we'll have our, uh, the board will have its discussion and then uh, I will call on uh, for public comment and don't let me forget to do so this time. Um, but yes, uh, when public comment comes around, um, I will uh, uh, call you out and then you can unmute yourself and uh, ask your question or state your comment. Um, okay. So for the first one, uh, the first highlight.
Yep. So the um, the first one, we'll start with uh, is going to be um, the height waiver. Uh, and you know, if board members don't have any um, any issues or concerns uh, and um, what's in the report is the consensus of the board, then um, that's sufficient.
Yeah, I don't, unless there's something that anybody else has brought up new, I think we've, we discussed this one uh, uh, pretty far in depth, uh, last, last meeting.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with the height restriction. I think the way the property drops off in the back and the fact that it isn't taller than the other buildings on campus, it's far.
I guess maybe, maybe what we can do just to roll this along quickly is I'll just do a quick, you know, incremental straw poll as we go. So um, I can't see everybody, but uh, so if you're okay with it, uh, just say yay or not nay. So, uh, Mark?
I said. I said yay.
Haley?
Yes.
Sue?
Yay.
And who am I forgetting? Linda?
Oh, yes.
I'm also a yes. Okay, so we're good to go with that one. We can move, move on down.
Yep, and the next one is the floodplain conservancy district. Um, and the applicant is filling three hundred and fifty one cubic yards and proposing five hundred and thirty five cubic yards of compensatory storage. I know one uh, board member did ask, and maybe uh, Don, you can clarify how um the irrigation is handled.
So the irrigation for this project will just be to get the plant material that we put in established and then it's turned off. It's all been designed for drug tolerant species and native species there. So we just need to get it established and then it goes off. We're estimating that's eighteen months. All depends upon when we start this and when this project gets finished, but that's a rough timeframe.
And is that irrigation system itself temporary or is it, is it built in the ground to?
Once it's in the ground, it's in the ground, but we'll have it valved off so we can turn it off.
Okay, okay. Uh, any other board members have any questions or comments on this? Otherwise, I can do the same thing again.
I, you know, as I said before, the NRC is much more tuned into what's going on here than I am, so I rely upon the NRC to to set the benchmark here, I guess. And that, that'll be a condition that will be part of the um acceptance.
Okay, not hearing any other uh, members. If you're okay with it, uh, Linda?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes, same as Mark. If the NRC is okay, I'm okay.
Yeah, and I'm also a yes for the same reasons. Um, all right, on to the next one.
On to the next one, uh, reserved parking.
Feel like this is the thing that we, we had talked the most about, so I'm I'm hesitantly confident that we can go straight to uh, the straw poll vote for this one. Anybody questions, any further questions or comments on this before that?
I'm, I'm really not comfortable with the whole parking situation, as everybody can tell, but um, you know, I think that I'd love the applicant to assure us that they don't perceive any parking difficulty when this structure is built. Okay, so, um, I don't know what that word, but I, I have a concern.
Well, if, if it does turn out there is some measure of parking difficulty, then the building commissioner provides notice to the applicant and brings it to the planning board and the planning board discusses it and um, if there is, if if there is an issue, then the applicant's required to construct out the additional parking spaces on the campus.
Okay, great, that's fair.
All right, not hearing any others. Uh, Linda?
Um, I equally have reservations here. Um and I feel that I'm, I'm not, e- even though we have put in those conditions. Um, I am not sure that it's uh going to be easy to implement or um uh, monitor whatever um and identify um, anything other than we have a lot of parking issues in town, you know, I mean, how do you say that it's because, what is it, fifty seven spaces were thrown onto Main Street and Academy Lane versus um, oh, it's the, you know, celebration or it's uh uh, the economy or uh, it's the library is being used much more than we thought it was in twenty seventeen, et cetera, et cetera. So I find it difficult that we're going to be able to identify and point to um, that fact when we get there in twenty twenty six and decide we have a real parking issue and um that, you know, really what we need is a bike lane because there's cyclists on the sidewalks and people are complaining about that, so I, I I really am troubled by um uh, the applicant assuming that the town is going to furnish its parking lots and I, I really um you know, I, I I understand not wanting to cut down trees and I understand wanting to have more lawn space. But those are things that um, I don't think the community is going to benefit from. To the extent that they would benefit from having fifty seven spaces available to the rest of the community to park on Main Street or Academy Lane. And so if I have to balance it out, I, I am not in favor of this.
Good for you.
All right. Uh, Mark?
Well, yeah, obviously you know that I've shared concerns, okay, and I'm glad to hear Linda echo them. I think there are alternatives. I asked the other day about the lot across the street that's going to be used for construction. Um, and I know that you don't want to have um you know, asphalt on that part, that property, but you know, you could put down gravel for excess parking or something like that. I think there's alternatives other than just you know, perhaps jamming them up on Main Street where everybody else parks. Um, I'd love to see an alternative, I guess. And Elizabeth, I can appreciate the fact that, you know, down the road, if there was a problem, then we can address it, but you know, will we really, will that happen, I guess? I don't know. Okay.
Um, I, I don't know, I'm, I Yep, the provision for reserved parking has been in the zoning bylaw for um, for a very long time. I don't know how many times that has been used. I can't, I can't think of a time where, you know, the building commit, somebody has asked for a reserved parking, um, where the building commissioner has come back and and required them to build it, so
Right.
Um, you know, whether it's um you know, I, I, I I, I understand, um, you know, the concerns and I also think that to your point, Linda, you know, it, it not being easy to monitor or identify an issue, whether um, you know, it's some other factor. For it to be the school, I think you're, you're talking about the, you know, a issue with parking being on a, on a daily basis of, you know, a one time off. You know, something at the library or something at the umbrella, y- you know, that's a day. Um you know, so I, I think when you're, when you're talking about there being an issue with the parking and the building commissioner coming back to the planning board saying you know, there is an issue, it's not, it's not just a day. You know, it's um, you know, whether it's the town coming in and removing parking on one side to put in a dedicated bike lane. That's going to be, you know, that's going to be easy to, to say, you know, uh, it's no longer a hundred and eleven spaces, um, it's now cut in half, you need to build out your parking. Um, if it's, you know, a one-off day or a one-off event, you know, then things go back to normal, but when it's becomes, you know, an issue over, you know, months. You know, then, you know, it's easy to attribute that, you know, somebody can go out there and, and you know, day after day, figure out where, you know, the problem is coming from. But, you know, I, I understand both of your positions as well, so um, I, I, I can't help you.
Well, I want to do the rest of the straw poll for this, just because I want to, and I want to come back to something else, so um, Haley?
Um, yeah, I have no problem with what they're asking for and the way they've done it. Um, I agree with Elizabeth. You know, if this is gonna, if this ends up truly being a problem, it's a very high-profile location. There's plenty of people that have very loud opinions in town that the building commissioner is going to hear about it if it's a recurring problem, rather than like a twice a year. Uh, you know, all stars align for some three massive events or whatever across these three locations, like I just personally don't see that as likely being much of an issue and, and if it is an issue on a daily basis, like I think the building commissioner is going to hear about it pretty fast. Um so, it's just my perspective. I don't, I, I'm, I'm supportive of what they're asking for.
Yeah, I am also supportive under the circumstances, given that there is a reserve parking and I don't think it would just be a daily issue if there was, you know, an issue once a week or even once a month, it might be enough to force some or all of the reserved parking to be built, but we will see about that. I will also note that in reading the prior parking studies about uh, other um, spaces in town, I discovered what I never knew, there's more public, there's a large public parking lot next to, across the street from the library that is not marked as a public parking lot, so uh, next time I can't find any parking in front of the library, I will curse the lack of parking, I'll go park there. Oh, and also, um, I saw the condition that uh, the applicant will be required to coordinate with the umbrella and the library about large events, and I think that that will uh, help out, so with all these things, I am comfortable.
So Nathan, I um, will add as far as the coordination between those three entities, um, that has um been happening um, since the umbrella project happened. Uh, and it's gotten uh, and Dawn can correct me, but it's gotten a little bit more formal, you know, each year and then with the library project and um, their addition, it got even a little bit more formal than to the point um, to Haley, uh, there was uh, three events scheduled all at the same time in one instance and um two of them got, you know, got, one got postponed and one got canceled. Uh, so they, you know, that coordination is happening.
I mean, that sounds great. I just, I do want to ask and maybe Dawn would be the one to answer this. When, when I hear that it's getting more formalized, that can go one of two ways, or mean one of two things, either that it's, it's, it's working well and it's good to have these uh, um, you know, things in place or that it's getting burdensome and then there's sort of resistance. Uh, uh, you know, it, it begins to break down a bit, so I want to make sure that it's, it's more the former than the latter, so is that, is that the case, Don?
Yeah, Nathan, my, my take on this is we have an informal arrangement, we have communication between the three groups. As an example, I can think of maybe two or three times the library has had an event and has asked to use our campus for parking and it, it works well that way. And so we should do a better job of trying to formalize that as three large institutions in a very small neighborhood, just to be responsive to that and then we'll take that on as the lead institution on that.
Great. And to answer my own straw poll, yes, I, I uh, also agree with what they're requesting and just sort of fundamentally also want to make sure we're, you know, maximizing the use of our existing uh, parking and not just building additional uh, parking surface for the sake of building parking surfaces. Um, okay, so the question I want to come back to after this was just that because uh, Mark and Linda, you know, you uh are hesitant or opposed to this particular um, portion of it. I want to ask, is that going to affect your overall vote for this? At, at this point with the members that are here, it sounds like so far, and I don't want to speak for Haley or, or for Sue, um, that, you know, this, this would pass at this point in time, but I, I want to be, you know, responsive to to your thoughts on this. Um, if this is really like a bigger issue for you that you would be voting no for it overall.
Want to answer on that, Nathan?
Of course.
I, I don't know. I think we need to listen to public comments before we take a vote. I'd be interested to hear what they have to say, okay?
Absolutely.
And you know, it, it's just, I made quite clear I have a problem with it. I mean, I go to the library a lot and oftentimes I can't find a place to park now and I'm concerned that it's going to be a bigger problem down the road. Nothing against Concord Academy, that wasn't my intent, okay, but I want to make sure that we're doing the right thing, that's all. Okay, so.
Um, Linda, did you want to add anything else?
Um no, I mean, I, I, I don't you know, I, I may uh, based on public comment, I, I may vote no or, you know, where I am at this point, but you know, I'm, I'm not a sore loser. I mean, you know, I don't feel we have to be unanimous. I think overall, it's, it's uh, going to be a wonderful project uh, for the applicant and for the community, so uh, but I, I do have a problem with parking uh, in the town center, so I, you know, I, I don't want to um feel like I'm uh exacerbating that problem. Um, and uh, you know, I don't see why we can't um, have a, you know, sort of an existing playing field, uh, you know, why we have to take more on the, you know, put more of the burden on the the town center um, than has been here for, so that's, you know, but, but I, I you know, I'll live for another day, for good.
Okay, well, thank you then for that. Uh, Elizabeth, I don't know if you want to continue on to the next, uh, the next one then?
Uh, so um the next item is um, just the uh, relief from parking and utilizing the employees on the largest shift instead of the number of employees employed by the school.
Yeah, uh, can I, can I assume that the result of this would be the same as the the prior, prior polls and certain related?
Well, yes, but I'd like to make a comment for our future reference that if we find ourselves doing this sort of thing a lot, we should change the way parking requirements are calculated in the zoning bylaw rather than going around granting special relief or recommending in favor of special relief, but that's
That's a project in, in, in the uh, after the new year.
Sure, yeah, I would, okay, it, it has nothing to do with tonight. I just wanted to make sure it doesn't get forgotten. Thanks.
All right, then we'll just, for consistency's sake, but just a yes or no on this one, I guess. A straw poll and I'll just do it in the order that I see people, so Linda?
I mean, I, I just, I sort of feel like um, the numbers are what can I say? I feel like the numbers were created to get the answer that we were looking for, so you know, I'm, I'm not in, in favor of changing the methodology. I, I, I'd like to, you know, have, have a little more thoughtfulness about it as a methodology as opposed to why we're making this exception. And so I don't really know if we should be looking at um this is a sort of a shift of business because it's not been that way for a long time in the zoning bylaw, so uh, you know, I'm I, I probably wouldn't have wanted to change the methodology just because there was no rationale other than to get the, the number to be a different number.
Okay, Mark?
I mean, I just have a problem with the parking overall. I understand what they've, the numbers that they've arrived at and I'm not so sure, I don't disagree with the methodology, but um, I somewhat echo Linda that the methodology was developed to come up with the right number, I guess, but I'm not as opposed to this as I am the overall parking situation, that's all.
Sue?
Yes, for the same reasons as previously.
Haley?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, uh, for basically the same reasons as previously as well. Okay.
Um and then the last part deals with um some of the comments and recommendations um from Concord Public Works Engineering. And specifically some of their conditions dealing with special, limiting special events at the art center that are expected to have an excessive attendance. I don't know what excessive attendance means. It's only, you know, a hundred and seventy-five seat. Jim, yeah, a hundred and fifty-seven five seat. The current art center is four hundred seats. So but under the Dover amended amendment and the special protections for educational use, I'm not sure that the town even has the ability to tell the school they can't utilize one of their buildings, but only in evening and weekends. In the recommended conditions, there is a condition regarding a post-construction parking analysis, but not a traffic analysis. I I don't agree with requiring the applicant to do a complete traffic analysis for Concord Center for, you know, based on this project. If school enrollment and staff is not being increased. The applicant demonstrate that the proposed driveway improvements have the adequate intersection site distance and unimpeded site triangle that correlates to the roadway speed. As I stated further in the report, I I don't think that's an attainable condition, given the roadway speed and the standards that conquer public works engineering uses. That would be an unimpeded triangle would be, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, I think it's like three hundred and twenty-five feet in one direction. You would be talking about numerous parking spaces having to be removed. So I I I don't think that's an attainable condition, given the nature of Main Street. I don't think that's an attainable condition in many of the older roads in the business centers. And then the last one, the applicant review the adequacy for safe pedestrian bicycle use on Main Street in front of the campus. It it's 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 a it's a public road. I'm I'm not sure that it's also the school's responsibility based on, you know, this proposed project that they are the ones that are required to assess safe pedestrian and bicycle conditions. The applicant has over the years made improvements to Main Street as far as the reconstructing the sidewalk in front of the main campus, lighting the pedestrian bump outs. So it's 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 rare that I get comment letters from town staff and not be able to support some of, you know, to support their recommendations. So I felt it was important. This was, you know, one of those few times where I think it's up to the board to have the conversation since I am, I am not in support of some of those recommended conditions.
Yeah. I think I I'm just glancing back over to make sure, but I I think I fully agree with all of the reservations that you have there. I when I see excessive attendance, yeah, I don't, if that's not defined, I have no idea what that is. And then like you said, I'm not sure that we could tell them to limit it to evenings or weekends as a as a function of their as a function of a school. I agree with the not doing a traffic study, you know, full-on traffic study. Six months after I issue issuing occupancy. I would wonder for the parking one, if they could do what they did previously.
Right, that's already a, that's that last condition.
Yeah.
The parking, doing a parking analysis in April and October.
Great, okay. So that's covered then. And I would, I'm surprised by the sightline distance because it's, is it twenty-five or twenty miles an hour in in Concord Center? I can't believe it's three hundred and twenty-five feet. That's crazy.
In that section, I believe, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong. I think it's thirty-five miles an hour.
Is it thirty-five already by that point?
It's thirty-five roughly at the intersection of the shot again, as you get closer to the downtown, it drops to twenty-five.
Good, okay.
I would suggest that if the sightline distance is so long based on the roadway speed, then perhaps we should lower the speed limit and add some traffic coming measures so that people would actually possibly drive at the speed limit. But I I don't see why we would make this applicant take that into account without then removing essentially every parking space on grounds of every single curb cut that already exists.
Yeah. I do agree with that. Yeah. So other other members, any other comments on that?
So I think I I think that's it.
All right. If that is it, as you scan down quickly, I will open up for public comments. I know that C W Kaiser, you've been patiently waiting with your hand up there and and the only one with their hand up. So, oh, a second one, but C W Kaiser, please unmute yourself and your name and address.
Thank you. I'm Bill Kaiser. I live at eight Middle Street. And I have to say that I share the concerns of the two board members regarding the potential adverse impact to the community with this application. I would also like to address another issue of traffic flow and safety. Academy Lane, I think we all will agree is a rather narrow way. I think ten vehicles lined up along that bumper to bumper is going to further narrow it such that I think easy travel will be severely impaired. And that's especially the case during morning rush hour, when you have all the people cutting through from subway road to avoid the traffic light. And you also have heavy town vehicles, semi-trailers coming down Middle Street, turning left and right and off Academy Lane. I'm not sure if they could negotiate Academy Lane with those ten vehicles all parked there. So I wonder if there could be a traffic analysis done from that perspective, which I don't believe has been done to this point. Thank you.
So Nathan, I can speak to that briefly. The ten parking spaces that are currently on Academy Lane, Academy Lane is a a public way. And those spaces are part of that public way. If the Concord Public Works or the Select Board designated that portion of Academy Lane as, you know, no parking, which they, you know, that is within their purview to do. It's not within the purview of the planning board or the zoning board of appeals. Then, you know, that would also be, I think, a a trigger. As far as that first condition dealing with changes on Main Street, I'm adding, you know, changes on Academy Lane. If all ten of those, you know, spots were to be removed and that becomes no parking, then that would be an indication to the building commissioner, he could come back to the planning board and say, okay, those ten spaces have been removed. He recommends that Concord Academy build out ten spaces of the revert, reserved parking.
I think it's just important to reiterate that that those are existing parking spaces, you know, there there's parking signage that is there, they're not, it's not as if the town is adding new parking spaces along Academy Lane. I can't, Bill, do you still have your hand up because you want to?
Thank you.
All right. The next up was Ed Nardi.
Oh, yes. Good, good evening. Ed Nardi at twenty-nine Academy Lane. I just, I I would just reinforce Bill Kaiser's comment in regard to what occurs on Academy Lane and a lot of the trucks coming down Middle Street, trying to take a left or right along Academy Lane. And even today, when people are parked along Academy Lane, it's very difficult to get two cars passing each other on Academy Lane. Oftentimes I will just, before I go down that portion of Academy Lane, I'll stop and let the traffic coming from Main Street go up Academy Lane and then I'll go down towards Main Street. It is just frankly too narrow to be comfortable passing in larger vehicles, larger, larger cars, or if there's a truck coming, there's no way you can get two cars passing each other. So that being said, I guess the the other question, a couple of other questions I do have, does the school know how many students drive to school today rather than taking an arbitrary twenty percent of the day population for parking?
Jim, I'm going to take a stab at this and then I'm going to let you jump in, but we have a four hundred student population, a hundred and fifty-five of those students live on campus, two hundred and forty-five of those day students, you know, by our analysis shows about a hundred of those are coming by mass transit, you know, really the train. It's a remainder that either drive to campus or get dropped off by their parents. What that ratio is, I don't have that information. Jim, do you want to add anything on to that?
I think you're closest to the metrics, Don, on campus.
So it's, so it's fair to say that the the metric that's held up in the parking calculus, the twenty percent is just an arbitrary number. It could be seventy-five people driving to to campus. Which would further burden the parking on the streets.
Well, if I think I understand your question, you know, through a period of time, over a week's period of time in April, we did three times a day, a parking count, what was vacant on campus and what was vacant on Academy Lane and Main Street is how we came up with our metrics. Does that answer your question? I'm not sure I'm answering it correctly.
Yeah, no, I I I understand where you're coming from in terms of the overall percentages. And then, and then the other question I have, Academy Lane today, you absolutely correct, it's public parking. There are, they're not striped or the parking spaces are not striped. They are just a part of the pavement and the the parking is signed, signage is out there. But there's a three-hour maximum parking. So how are you going to control that with people that may come and park all day to go to a Concord Academy?
Well, that's that's an enforcement issue with the police department. If it's a three-hour maximum and somebody from Concord Academy who's parks there all day, that's an enforcement issue.
Well, with all, with all due respect, I've never seen anybody be ticketed on Middle Street or Concord or or Academy Lane ever. And just to this past week, when there was a string quartet playing at Concord Academy, two people parked beyond the parking sign that says no parking here to cool to the corner. And it, you know, makes for a very tight corner at Academy Lane and Middle Street. And I'm not saying the police should be out there all the time worrying about our particular neighborhood, but there is no enforcement whatsoever by the police department on the parking along Academy Lane or Middle Street from what I've seen over the past eight years I've lived here. So I'm not sure how that's going to get any better going forward.
I I can't, I can't speak to enforcement. I mean, I can pass along your concerns to the chief.
Yeah, I I I know and that's, but that's why we're talking about this issue where, you know, passing along concerns or bringing it to someone's attention. But this has been going on for a long time. And again, the the town has priorities. They only have so many staff. We all respect that. But again, you know, I I'm not, I'm not sure how this is going to be controlled because a staff member is going to pull over there, they're going to park. And if they're working all day at the school, they're not going to come out after three hours and park somewhere else or move their car because that's just not practical. And I don't see the town's going to start ticketing people there aggressively on a, on a, on on that basis. So it it's really a concern that the 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 town is advocating some of its parking for parking lot for the school. Because the people that'll that'll park will be parking there or whatever the duration of their workday is, or or the students attending the school. So I see that as a a problem in regard to how the parking is supposed to be working on the streets today. And and ultimately, the the final concern I have is what a couple of the board or the the board members are are noting tonight. There's, there is ultimately going to be a breaking point for the parking in the center of town. You know, Cafe Nero is noted, the library is noted. You know, Emerson is noted, now Concord Academy. And, you know, eventually there's just a lot of the public parking being used for these other venues, which we, which which it should be, it should be utilized for those. But eventually we can't keep on having variances for parking for large institutions. Because eventually there is a breaking point for the parking. And it's not just one time a year. It's, it's, you know, there's a lot of events in town and there's a, and Concord Center is a popular center. And a lot of, we've seen over the past weekends, which is great for the retailers, that there's a lot of people shopping in Concord Center. You throw an event or two on top of that from, you know, on the holidays and stuff. You know, the the parking gets stressed. So I'm 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 just, I guess I'm just concerned that if you looked at the regs as 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 clearly noted in your write-up, the town planners write-up, that three hundred and forty-seven becomes two hundred and forty-seven, becomes two oh four, now it becomes one forty-seven. It's, it it just seems like it's a very dramatic cut in parking as other components get added to campus. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. All right, we'll move on to the next that I see is D Dapi.
Oh, that's me. I'm Belinda Dappus. Dee is my husband who isn't here at the moment. We've been residents. We live at one sixty-nine Main Street, which is at the corner of Main and Academy. And we are very unhappy about parking, mostly Concord Academy parking. It's been going on for years and I go through phases of just giving up and saying I can't do anything about it, but this really got to me. Ed's numbers got to me. Academy Lane, commandeering Academy Lane got to me, even though most of those cars are Concord Academy now. It, I I just I don't see how you can take them away from us, the people. So I do have a couple of questions besides just expressing my dismay. One question is, does Concord Academy not have any parking space over at Arena, the Rena Farm Place area? Where they could bus people back and forth for, you know, morning and and afternoon evening or something. And the other is, in the old days, students and faculty used to get parking stickers or passes, not passes, but something to identify their car as a student Parker, student C A Parker or as a faculty staff Parker. And I wondered if this still continues and if it doesn't, how come it stopped? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up I see Carol Savoy.
Yeah, hi, Carol Savoy, sixty-one Bellknap Street. Just, you know, first of all, I would, I just want to say, I think the Concord Academy project is beautiful and, you know, like to see it come into fruition, but I'm also concerned about the parking. And I was wondering, you know, I know there's lots of numbers floating around, you know, three fifty-seven, two thirty-seven, two hundred and four, one forty-seven, but it sounds like roughly fifty-seven parking spots will be required to be counted on Main Street of roughly a hundred spots, which is roughly like fifty-six percent of the spots Like fifty-six percent of the spots that are going to Concord Academy and, um, you know. That takes away spots from the community, you know, and particularly people are very sensitive about the library. They like to go to the library. A lot of our older residents in town like to go to the library and there's not spots close by, or if you have young children. Getting them in and out of the car is kind of a big deal and takes a lot of time, so they want those spots closer to the library. And I know you can't assign them to the library, but, you know, the con- people always want to park closest to where they're going, right? So, you know, their Concord Academy is going to take those spots. So I was wondering, has there been any discussion about any sort of compensation? Um, you know, because developers say a parking spot's worth roughly ten thousand dollars to build a spot. And if we're saying we're going to give them parking relief for fifty-seven spots times ten thousand dollars, that's roughly, you know. Five hundred and seventy thousand dollars, it would cost Concord Academy to build those spots. Um, that we're giving up. Has there been any discussion or interest in, in pursuing that?
Not sure who that question is directed.
To the board, have you asked to, you know, if we're going to grant fifty-seven spots and parking relief. That costs ten thousand dollars a spot, that's half a million dollars or five hundred and seventy thousand dollars that Concord Academy is not. Having to spend to build those spots on their property and they're taking the spots away from the community. And, you know, it's not really to the benefit of the community, so. I was wondering if, you know, we could ask Concord Academy to compensate us for that loss. And put it towards some other public use, parking relief. Um, and not parking relief, it's like parking re- remediation or traffic remediation or. Affordable housing or some other need in the town, um, for giving up that asset.
I mean, I'm gonna go with the answer to that is probably no, because we're also stating that in the event that they need to go back and, and. Construct the parking spaces, uh, that they're asking, you know, relief for. I know probably not using the relief word in the right way in that instance, but, um. With, if we can't hold them to, to, to basically double, double pay in that instance, does that make sense?
Yeah, I believe. I believe we did actually discuss, um, to answer your question, Carol, this question earlier, much earlier in our deliberations. But yes, I don't know how we would give the money back.
Well, maybe we don't, right? I mean, th- th- they base, if, if we're not, if, if they're going to get the parking or have had the parking for how many years? And they're, they're going to continue to use the parking and they may not get into a position that they need to. Build the parking spots on their property ever, or maybe it's five years from now, there's still the cost of. You know, for five years of doing that, right? I, I think the, the town should be able to get some sort of compensation for it.
My, my, my only comment would be coming up with that metric, um, you know. Ten, ten thousand dollars, you're, you're talking about a, a, a green field development, a commercial development where you're building out. Um, parking, stormwater drainage, utilities, lighting, um, so that's, that's a different metric, um. So, you, you know, the conversation for the board, there've been, um, other projects where. Um, relief has been granted and applicants, um, have provided, you know, some funds towards. Um, you know, transportation demand management options. At the time, we had across town connect the Transportation Management Association, which, um, is, you know, no longer. Functioning the way it was, uh, once COVID hit, but, um, you know, we do have the Concord Shuttle. So, you know, those have been conversations in different projects. It would be, you know, coming up with that, what is that metric?
Right, I mean, this is not, you know, uh, I guess it's, um, considered brownfield, not greenfield. But there is a cost, you know, is it ten thousand dollars, is it five thousand dollars a spot? You know, something like that and contributing towards the trolley or some sort of, um, some sort of need that the town has. Is, is just the request that, uh, the planning board, uh, you know, kind of consider that. Uh, and continue talking to Concord Academy about it. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to, uh, Bean Nardi, I want, hold off one second. I, because I see that Tom has, uh, is part of the applicant group and has, has his hand raised, so. Go ahead, Tom.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair Tom Kearns, President of D S K and, uh, five forty-four Keebers Turnpike Resident. Uh, I, I just wanted to mention, given that the comment that was just made, that. Over the last several years, Concord Academy has partnered with the town, including partnering, partnering in the kind of financial. Uh, side of things to do all the Main Street improvements. That was all the safety work, uh, the sidewalk repairs. The new L E D lights along there, there was a, a kind of partnership that Don led actually, uh, that we supported in the background. So there has already been, uh, I think a, a very healthy partnership, but in terms of putting a tariff on. Uh, individual spaces per se, I think it would be hard to broadcast that to what is Cafe Nero. What is Main Street cafes have to pay, you know, what is, uh. You can go down the list and try to figure that out. I think that would be, that might be difficult, but I think that there already is a very healthy partnership. Uh, with the town and, uh, along this corridor in particular.
Thank you, Tom. Linda, I see you wanted to make a comment.
Well, I just wanted to, um, say that yes, those are major improvements. Um, and I think the town is, uh, and certainly the planning board are very aware of them and grateful for their contribution. However, I would also say that, um, all of the people who are. Um, discussing this from the community are, and it, in all of the merchants and. Owners of property, uh, in the town center pay taxes. And I think that should be reflected and we definitely, um. Uh, acknowledge the fact that they are taxpaying and very much supporting. Um, the, um, quality of life in the town center. And, um, so I think, I think there's a lot of contribution there as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Okay, uh, Bean Nardi.
Hi, Bean Nardi, twenty-nine Academy Lane. Um, I just want to echo what a lot of folks have been talking about the. The, the parking crunch around here, um. We already deal with basically a trifecta of. A confluence of the three major institutions that surround us in this triangle and. When there's events and, and even just, uh, like. Like shopping in town and the, it's the holiday or there's other, just people want to shop and the sp- the spots get filled, you know. Naturally, people start parking further out and that's great. I mean, that's what these spaces are for, these spaces are for the community. And I'm just kind of shocked and disheartened to see that Concord Academy could be. Kind of usurping those spots for their own use and I, I understand. Um, how they do that with open houses and I think they do actually a really good job. You know, they come down the street and hammer no parking signs and put the orange cones out when there's going to be a huge event like an open house or. Parents Weekend or these back-to-school things and they do a great job and that so people don't. Park all the way up to the corners or block our driveways and stuff and that's great, but. You know, we already deal with so much, so much traffic and so much. Oh, well, overflow parking, but you know, legitimate, the way these parking spots are supposed to be used, which is. People who visit our homes, people who are trying to go to the library or do stuff at the umbrella. Or, you know, visit Concord Academy or go into town and we all, we have this confluence of sixteen-wheelers that. Many, if I sat out there and counted the times, it's probably, you know, fifteen, twenty times a day that sixteen-wheelers. Pull down Academy to go on Middle. And they'll often do a three-point turn, which blows my mind that they do that without actually plowing our fence in, it's amazing, but. They seem to be good at their job, but with, with all the, all the, these sixteen-wheelers cut through traffic. And already the three institutions around us utilizing these parking spaces on an ad hoc basis, I just can't. Support at all the use of. Using these spaces on a more regular basis for Concord Academy. I feel like it's a private institution, they've got a lot of money. And they can park the cars on their, on their site. We already have the kids. We see these kids parking and they'll park their cars on the wrong side, they'll park on the right side of the road but heading in the wrong direction. I mean, they're teenagers, you know, they're just kind of pull in and do their thing and I just feel like. It's just not an appropriate use of community parking. Thank you.
Yes, Sue, and thank you, Bean.
I have a question for you, Elizabeth. If Concord Public Works saw fit. Would they be able to sign Academy Lane and/or Middle Street to say no trucks?
Um, there's a, a process by, um, which, um, it goes through Concord. Public Works Engineering, um, I don't know if it goes to the Public Works Commission, um, but then as far as signage like that, that goes through the Select Board. So.
So, okay, so there could be, be a process, however, and.
There is, there is a process, yes.
Alright, um, yeah, and that's really, uh, I'm asking this irrespective of the current application, since clearly there's already an issue. And it might not be suitable to so do, but yes, there is a process. Thanks, Elizabeth.
Okay, I'm not seeing, thank you, Sue, I'm not seeing any other, uh, public comments. Our hands raised. Oh, uh, Tom, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I'd, I'd like to just offer, uh, maybe a different way to frame, uh, the notion of. C A is usurping parking spaces. The, the town has a very ambitious, uh, set of sustainability goals. And what we're proposing that then C A has the ability to build out all of the required parking spaces. They do have that ability, but on the other hand, we're trying to balance the opportunity to reduce impervious surfaces. And make the green space better for the environment. And we've been working closely with the N R C in terms of finding that balance. And so our suggestion is, and our proposal is, can we look for that balance, not build all the parking spaces out at once? But find a way that if we need to incrementally add spaces we can, but if we don't need to, then we don't have to pave much of that campus. And I think it's, uh, it, it is really a, a more kind of contemporary way of thinking about that balancing act. I know that the local residents experience the issues you're talking about and there's a lot of management. Um, improvements that sound like they could be made, but I'm not aware of, and I'm probably going to get in trouble for saying this and Elizabeth. Yeah, I may put you on the spot. I'm not aware of a professional stating that there is. A kind of macro parking problem in the core center, the historic core. Doesn't mean there are isolated significant issues, uh, but we all, as community members, I've been in the community thirty years and serving on boards. We all work hard to manage the parking and to make it fair. But in terms of a, a significant problem, I'm not sure that I have heard that anecdotally it's mentioned. Uh, but I, I think this is a reasonable balanced proposal to avoid a large amount of additional paving. And if we need to go there, we can, uh, we certainly can. So, uh, that i- is really trying to find that balance between, let's say, planning and, and our, N R C and, and the goals of. Uh, sustainable goals of both the town and C A that we're trying, we're trying to find that right balance. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Linda.
I, I think one, one of the issues may be that, um, uh, town center, um. Used to, and I don't know if it still does, um, with the whole parking meter situation, but used to hope that there would be. Turnover in parking, that is, you would come in, you'd, um, go to lunch in town or you'd purchase something, you'd go to the library for an hour with your kids. Or whatever, and then move on. And so, um. That a lot of the parking spaces were oriented to people parking for an hour, two or three. But, um, not parking for a full day of, of classes, um, and maybe after school as well. And so I think there's a, a change in the nature of parking, um, with, um, having a greater use. Um, of town center parking for longer-term parking that might come from the academy.
Isn't there a commensurate reduction? Well, I don't know if it's commensurate, but a reduction in spillover parking from. The commuter train, because fewer people are commuting from western suburbs into the city. Uh, and many of them would prefer to keep it that way going on. Things do change. I'm not saying it's equivalent. I'm just noting that there are competing forces here.
I don't know how many would be parking closer to Concord Center to then take the train, but.
Well, Academy Lane, and I can remember, uh, cases in the past where in desperation, I actually parked at. Kai's Road just because I had to be in downtown Concord after work.
Alright, I want to be mindful that we've been at this for an hour and a half, so I see, uh, uh, you know, there's two. Hands up still, Tom and Carol, so I want to allow, uh, you know, you have your say, um, quickly since both of you have spoken before. Um, to say your points and then we can move on to the next thing. Um, Carol, you had yours up first, so I'll let you, you go first.
Great, Carol Savoy, sixty-one Bellknap Street. I just wanted to point out, I don't know, uh, the. You know, Tom mentioned there was not a parking problem in the center. I've lived at sixty-one Bellknap Street for twenty-plus years and there's been a parking problem for twenty years, so all of us that. Live in the center, a lot of people on Academy Lane and Middle Street and we're well aware of the parking problem and it's an ongoing issue and a hot button issue. Um, so I just wanted to make you aware that there is a parking problem. And also just wanted to, you know, point out, I applaud your sustainability and what you're doing. I love green space, the more green space, the better and. Would like to see how we can accommodate your spots to have that green space, but I would also, you know, like to point out that. Um, you know, the green space is going to be used for other campus functions and activities and things like that, so, you know. Concord Academy is getting benefit from that green space. It's not just all sustainability, right? It's that you're, you can have more outside functions, et cetera, which I think you explained in a, in a previous meeting, so. Those were just my two points I wanted to make. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Tom, did you not, you're okay, okay. Um, okay, not seeing any others and since it is now eight-thirty. I think we can move on to taking a vote for the recommendation. Oh, I had it in front of me. Now I don't have it in front of me anymore, um. Does somebody else, I don't have it in front of me now, does someone else want to?
You're just talking about.
Ah, yes, I do have it in front of me.
Right here, this section here.
Yes, but Sue, please.
Ah, okay, whoop, I had it in front of me and then I switched to see what, um, Elizabeth was saying. Okay, very good, um. I move that the planning board. Recommend a special permit with site plan review under section six point two point eleven height. Seven point two floodplain conservancy district, seven point. Excuse my poor screen, seven point seven point two point eight reserved parking spaces. Seven point seven point two point twelve relief from parking, eleven point six special permit. And eleven point eight point seven educational site plan. To construct a centennial art center, relocate and rehabilitate two existing dwellings to twenty Main Street and Ides Cottage. Convert existing attached garage at two-three-eight Main Street into a dwelling unit. And other associated site improvements at one-six-six Main Street, parcel number seventeen oh six.
I will second that. Alright, um, just going by who I see first on the screen, Linda.
I will, will vote nay or no, um, but solely because of the parking situation. The, the relief from parking and I, I'm very supportive of, uh, otherwise. What I consider a wonderful project for Concord Academy. uh, otherwise what I consider a wonderful project for Concord Academy.
Thank you. Mark?
I'm going to vote yes with an asterisk that I really need them to focus on the parking situation down the road if that becomes a problem, as I think Tom has indicated he would. Um, I have a great concern there, but I think the overall project is a great one, and I look forward to having it be done. I think Concord Academy is an attribute to our community. Um, and I think we are in favor of supporting it.
Thank you. Sue?
I vote yes.
Haley?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. And I also look forward to uh, the construction and uh, the new building and an arrangement. Okay, so I think, do we need to do anything else, Elizabeth?
No. Just adjourn the meeting.
I can do that. Thank you, everybody, uh, for participating and uh, and taking us through this. Uh, and I adjourn the meeting at eight thirty-three on November twenty-sixth, uh, twenty-ninth uh, twenty twenty-two. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Good night.